Well, it is seven fifteen as the call we need order. Uh Stacy will be uh doing my Microsoft teams and and not be able to sense everybody else is here. Will Stanford pledge allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with every human judgment.
Okay, welcome everybody. First time up will be to approve the meeting agenda. There's been some additions or changes.
Yeah, a couple items have been added since we sent the window to the public. One is in acknowledgements, uh spring all state athletes. We added a few athletes there. And then under consent items, an E, two items that were added since we emailed it out to the public is approve the resignation of Norma Martin and approve the resignation of Mary Storston. So those are the couple items that we've added since we emailed it out to the public.
Okay. Right, all right, do you have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the additions that's noted.
Do we have a motion, remember, and do we have a second? Second, my molly, any discussion? Here you know discussion, all in favor of approving the meeting agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye, both say aye. Gendy carries, opportunity for visitors to address the board. Okay. Didn't see anybody, so we'll move on. So we have acknowledgements, it's quite few this time. We have two thousand twenty-four valedictorian, Ellie Welch and salutatorian Elizabeth Moll. Activity workers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We have substitutes for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We have spring all state athletes, so we have softball academic all state, Claudia Graff, Eva Simpson, Ariana Fia Gomez. We have track academic all state, Grace Backstrom, Andrew Checo de Souza, Megan Guler, Ethan Isman, Justin Jacobson, Charlie Larson, Gray Larson, Alvin Norton, Kenny Rusman, Rodie Severson, Ellie Welch, Jack Welch. We have all state, Grace Backstrom, Anthony Checo de Souza, Ethan Isman, Justin Jacobson, Charlie Larson, Ellie Welch, and Jack Welch. We now team academic all state, boys and girls, gold. Anyway, of track, state track participants, Grace Backstrom, Anthony Checo de Souza, Megan Guler, Ethan Isman, Justin Jacobson, Charlie Larson, Ellie Welch, and Jack Welch.
Well, uh thank you to all our activity workers um and our substitutes for the school year, helping everything run smoothly. Congratulations to Ellie and Elizabeth, valedictorian and salutatorian, and congratulations to all our spring student athletes listed.
Okay. We'll move on to administrative reports. Uh Mr. Nelson, do you wanna go over the elementary and the A D department?
Um, thank you to Cassie Klausten, who next year is gonna be doing her student teaching. Uh so she's designing her fair position, so she'll be student teaching in our first grade classroom next year. Also Cameron McFarland, who is going back to school next year. Thank you for work and um she is working on pub bikes again this summer. And then Arica Penga, who's going on a mission trip next year, so good luck to her. She uh goes on that adventure. And then also Cindy Wyden, who is returning from the kitchen. Thank you for her years of service at Biking Elementary in the Kitchen. And then like Mr. Corst said, adding Mary Storston and Norma Martin from the ABSIS program. Thank them for their work as not only teacher of Biking Elementary, but then come back working in the ABSIS program. On May twenty-third, we had a bridges training for new math curriculum. Uh the lady did an excellent job. They kinda laid out for the teachers what exactly they need to look for in their new curriculum where to find stuff. And I thought she did a very good job of being upfront and honest with the staff book. This is something you cannot miss. You know, this is something, it says this, maybe do this, but this part of it, you cannot miss. This is very essential, so she did a very good job. And August twenty-ninth, we have uh training for fast bridge. Fast bridge is one of our new screeners that we, the state mandated that we either use fast bridge or dibbles for screening or reading. It's also used as a dyslexia screener. So our training for that will be on during the workshop day on August twenty-ninth. We're also setting up dates for our letters training. Then again, this comes from the READ Act. There are three different programs that we're mandated that we have to pick from. The letters was picked by elementary and high school, so that training will uh dates will be set up and that'll be over the next two years, but the letters training will take place. Probably about a hundred and twenty hours worth of training that uh teachers will go through for the letters. And this year, uh state's always had a read well by third grade um report that has to be due. That's changed down to the literacy plan and that's due on Friday. It's been submitted, so that's in. That takes the place of that read well by third grade plan that has been done in the past. Activities, uh the state track meet, Megan Guler participated the hundred, two hundred. Uh Grace Backstrom finished seventh in the high jump. Ellie Welch finished fifth in the discus. The four-by-four relay finished ninth, uh Ethan Isman, Anthony Checo de Souza, Jack Welch, and Charlie Larson. Justin Jacobson participated the disc and the shot and finished third in the discus. And Charlie Larson, as well as being on the relay, finished seventh in the eight hundred and third in the sixteen hundred, so great showing by all those individuals down at the state track meet. Congratulations to them. Section golf meet, uh Lizzie Grablin advanced to the second day of the um subsection track or the subsection golf meet, which was up in Vemiji this year. And the baseball and softball team each won a home playoff game, advancing to the double elimination round. And then thank you to Steve Babbs, who is retiring as JV baseball coach. And thank him for all of his years of service coaching baseball.
Is he officially retiring?
We'll see, we'll see if he stays that way.
Been doing it a while.
Been doing it a while, yes. And uh very good to come in and help and, you know, donate time as well, so. His arm may need a little break following batting practice, he's throwing over the years, so.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Uh enrollment wise, we finished where we started. We finished with four hundred and four students. Here we started in August. Uh we have summer meals again at the high school. Mrs. Calzroot and um Mrs. Justin are working together. Serve kids eighteen and younger at the high school. Meals are served Monday through Thursday um through August sixteenth. Breakfast is from eight to nine thirty and lunch from eleven to twelve thirty. It's been pretty well attended so far by um our students. Summer school started um right after Memorial Day and will actually end tomorrow um on the thirteenth. Mr. Rarick, Mr. Schaper, Mr. Haukrood, and Mrs. Vogel have been tagged in this effort. We've had twenty-one students complete credits in math, social studies, and literature, so. Good work there. Agenda items that I have, approve the hire of Ms. Amber Wang as choir teacher and fall play advisor. It's been really nice to have a teacher in the high school be back in charge of the fall play. Hoping the Browns will still help with um a good transition for her. Two other hires, Mrs. Kelsey Lage as honor society advisor and Mrs. Devin Severson as our prom advisor. Over the summer, just some things um that we'll be planning for the school year. Updating our student and staff handbooks. Finalized the master schedule, which should be for the most part. Pretty ready to go with the addition of um Ms. Wang. Staff development topics, our PLCs, I kinda mentioned this, but we are gonna work through four different groups this next year. One will be ELL training, one will be working on student portfolios, which we've kinda talked about this past year. Another group will work on mental health topics. And then our last group will um dissect STAR and READ Act data. So four good groups that um we'll work on getting some of the like work done for them this summer. And then just updating our mentorship program, which will be for Ms. Wang, which starts in August. Questions?
Thanks. Any other suggestions, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, uh student activities, speed and strength are in session for grades seven to twelve. They will end in July. Spring sports have officially came to an end. Summer rec is also began for grades first to sixth. As Ms. Laura Janoszki said, um summer school is in session for student graduate recovery. Pub bikes, kids gathered around for track and field state send-off on June sixth. Girl Scouts helped honor veterans with flag placements. They assisted more than six hundred fifty flags at the grave sites of veterans at uh cemeteries throughout Pelican. Brand new bikes were given to the elementary kids, one winner from each grade. They um it was the Pelican-based Otter Tail Lodge and they've been, we've got cultural giving kids bikes for over the years. It's really nice of them and that's all I have for activities.
Any questions? Thank you. Martinez.
Morning, everyone. All right, so um uh we'll start with the treasurer's report. Um and then we'll go into some of the bigger items that you guys will have to approve tonight. I'll try to go a little bit quickly in the treasurer's report just because I wanna spend the majority of the time on the other reports. Overall budget to actual, uh we are in a pretty good uh pretty good position um as we uh continue our fiscal year. We have one more month left, we are on month eleven. Please excuse the typo that says March, um that should actually be April, so we're recording in the month of April. No, I'm sorry, in the month of May. As you guys kinda heard me talk about last month, that we were kinda waiting on our levy dollars to come in, second half of our levy. That came through, so you can see that our revenue now is sitting at ninety-two percent of budget to actual and expenditures are sitting at eighty-nine percent budget to actual. So overall, we're in a pretty good place. We have one more month to account for, which is the month of June. Big things that happen in June is practically just recognizing um salary uh salary payout. So we recognize the majority of the salary in June uh for the remaining, remaining two months for a lot of our contract employees and we do that for a lot of accounting reasons, but that's primarily what we'll do. State revenues remain about between ninety-two to ninety-four percent. And again, that has to do with the state withholding back ten percent so they don't get in trouble. But overall, we are sitting in a pretty good place in terms of budget to actual. I think we're gonna come right on target. I would say if anything, it will probably be one to two percent deviation from our plan. But overall, like I said, budget to actual, we are in a pretty good place. Let's move on to second page. Uh second page, you guys are very familiar with this report. This is practically the cash that we have circulating on hand. We started our investment account with four point seven million dollars. Uh we received one point one million dollars in state and federal revenues, of which I pulled six hundred thousand for a ending balance in our investment account of five point two million. Cash on hand in our checking account, we started with seventy-nine thousand dollars. Total deposits were three million dollars. That had to do with the million dollars that we pulled from our investment account in addition to our levy being deposited. Total uh bills for the month were seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. Total payroll was three hundred and ninety-seven, with cash on hand in our checking account at the end of the month were one point nine million dollars. I will be transferring quite a bit of money from our checking account up to our investment account because the rates in our investment account are far superior than sitting in our checking account and we wanna capitalize that as much as possible. So that will happen over that course here in the next week or so. And then the last pages of the treasurer's report um is completely just all the payables that go through our checking account. And like I say all the time, uh if you guys have any questions about them, go ahead and let us know. The one journal entry that Emmett's pointing out here, uh we had a old check that came through our uh banking account that I had to account for, it was a check that I had voided, but the person decided to cash it two years later after the fact, so I had to adjust for that. That's what you see there. Okay, treasurer's report, any questions before I dive in into the other items? Am I hearing anything? Okay, perfect. So uh other thing that you guys will have to approve tonight will be the Head Start lease. This is a program that we've had in our building for many, many years. We practically renew it every single year. Uh we provide Head Start with two spaces, one, the old computer lab close to the fifth grade wing, and then the other is the old music that is right as you enter uh Biking Elementary. Overall, we've had a pretty good partnership with them. They, we do everything to accommodate their needs because they do have federal requirements of what in terms of uh what we have to provide as a landlord. But overall, great partnership, they integrate into our system very well. They're a very good program for our school district. We wanna capture as many students as possible at that age because the concept is that the earlier you get them in your building, uh more likely they will stay in your school system. So again, very good program to have in our school district. The other piece that you guys will approve tonight will be your uh fiscal year twenty-six LTFM plan, long-term facilities plan. This is a plan that uh we set with uh Mr. Steves and uh Mr. Horv every spring and then we go over the needs uh district-wide and both buildings. It's a very intensive process in the sense that uh we have to provide practically an asset inventory list from all of our equipment that's turning over to the age of our buildings. And we have to provide a ten-year report in terms of what will be replaced. LTFM does have to be approved, so tonight in your business items, you guys uh will pass the motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-six LTFM. One of the new added pieces, uh this is the second year doing this, is you guys have to uh know the amount of revenue that we are collecting. So this is kind of the ten-year projection revenue that we are collecting from our long-term facility maintenance plan. Uh for fiscal year twenty-six, we're going to receive a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Our job as school officials is making sure that every single year we budget for a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The concept before long-term facility maintenance is that a state gives you money to upkeep your building. As your school district building ages, you you are given more, more revenue. One of the unique things about Pelican Rapids, though, is that when this program happened, it was right when we, our, our district needed significant upgrades. So we actually tied quite a bit of our LTFM dollars into our long-term facility lots. So primarily what they're paying for is our HVAC systems. So in addition to the building construction bond that we'd issued in twenty-fourteen, when this program rolled out in order for us to upgrade the HVAC ventilation, we used a lot of our LTFM dollars to tie that. And you see that here, right, where you see the seven, six hundred and ninety, six, or six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. That is a lot of the revenue that is being collected from our taxpayer base to help cover that. You see that more relevant, so Emmett, if you scroll to the right. You see that more relevant as uh I guess you don't see it. Here we go, there it is. As our uh long-term facility maintenance bonds come due, you see our revenue in fiscal year thirty-two almost doubled. So again, once we pay off that debt that is tied to our long-term facility maintenance, we should be able to receive significant more dollars to keep our buildings. So again, the main thing we want to know about the revenue plan is that we budget for this. So this is the revenue side piece of it, so let's go to page two. Page two, this is our ten-year plan that we spend majority of the time. The one thing to know about uh about our ten-year plan is that it is a live document. It changes from year to year because we try our best to anticipate the needs of the building, but a pie can burst in the bedroom and then you're out quite a bit, so, and that has happened here. Majority of the pieces that you can see as we work with Mr. Steves is we are uh spending about out of the a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, we are spending the majority of the money um in site projects. And site projects include everything from keeping uh practically waxing our entire district floors to upkeeping our parking lots. The main majority of the revenue for this year is actually gonna go into tuck and point. This is gonna be the third year that we're doing this and tuck and point is a pretty tedious process where we hire a company to literally take out the mortar in between the bricks and they replace that. So again, we're in year three uh of this. And uh after they finish that high school, next year I believe they'll start at the elementary. So that's what's gonna consume the majority of that. And you wanna keep that up because you don't want water in your kitchen, you don't want your bricks to practically fall. So things that we don't think about, what Mr. Steves does, so kudos to him. Here is the ten-year projection plan and like I said, it's a live document. We try our best to try to allocate the revenue based on the needs of the building, based on the age of the building, but as I mentioned, uh we don't know when a roof will collapse and when we will need to be replaced. Try to, try to stick to our ten-year plan, but now that it will change from year to year. The main thing that the state looks for is to make sure that we budget for the amount of revenue. And that's primarily why we're doing this report, so you guys know that we're being fiscal responsible and we're always staying within a budget of the dollars that we receive for the LTFM. Okay, uh any questions regarding the long-term facility maintenance plan? Wonderful, thank you. Then we'll jump over to the last report, which is the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five. This is a year-long process. We start conversation as early as September of each school year and we do that because many meetings have to happen, right? Everything between who our board officials are to what um our district priorities are. We look at enrollment and many other things. So as you guys look at the proposed budget, we try to encapsulate everything that we stand for in terms of districts so you guys see our plans here. It's just a summary of everything that we believe will happen within this school year. So Emmett, if you just kinda keep going down. Perfect, so budget overview. Again, every fiscal year, uh in the springtime, legislation goes into session and they discuss how much money they're gonna give the school districts. We operate in bienniums, um so this is year two of two of the, of the current biennium, so we already know what we're going to receive. Last year, legislation passed a biennium of four percent the first year and s- and two percent formula increase the second year. So going into fiscal year twenty-five, we know that the funding formula is going to increase by two percent. After that is when they will start to tie it into uh our consumer pricing, or another fancy term for inflation. But they did cap it at three percent, okay? The one thing that is being discussed in legislation today is our categorical funding. Everything from basic skills to EL funding to uh all the other programs. And for that, I have not had, nothing given in terms of what uh categorical funding formulas will increase to. So uh if anything changes and deviates from our plan, we will give you guys a report more likely in August or September board agenda in terms of there is any additional revenue increase that will happen after the legislation settles. Here's our uh our ADM, which is the most important thing in our district. Remember that uh we receive the amount of funding based on the number of students that our district has. That is the most important thing uh in everything. We're here to serve the students and the students are the ones that generate the income that will then help offset all the costs that come with serving an entire district. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we are projecting about eight hundred and seventy-four adjusted pupil units, okay? My world operates in uh pupil units. What that means is a three-step process on how the state actually pays you, right? The first phase is we take into account head count, right? So we task our principals to give us a head count of how many students they're gonna have per grade level. After that, we look into number of instructional hours and school days. And then at the end of that, there is a very complicated formula that we make the assumption out of all those school days and out of all those instructional hours, how likely each student will be there because the state pays you for the amount of hours that the student is at their seat. So if a student is absent or a student misses X amount of hours, they actually do prorate that amount for you. So attendance is huge in the amount of revenue that we actually do receive from the state. Okay, so uh this report kinda gives you an idea um of what our projection is. Uh one of the things to note and I need to be very clear with this disclosure is that when you look at the kindergarten classes and you heard me say that we start this process as early as September is because we look at our census reports. And you guys have heard us year-round that we say we look at our census report, we look at our student projections. We try to capture what our zero reports are gonna be every single year. And one of the things that the census report does is gives us an idea, right? So uh twenty-eight, twenty-nine, right now, the census report tells us that that particular age group, I don't know if they're one or under one, is coming at a fifty-three, but those are just the births that the county has recorded in within our footprint. One thing that the census report fails to do is that they don't capture students moving in and moving out of the district. So that number is subject to change, but as it stands, uh these numbers are a little low for what we would like to see. We have a very big pandemic class coming in with ninety-two students in uh in twenty-five, twenty-six. So hopefully we capture those ninety-two students. The year that we're, that we're actually uh budgeting for, it's gonna be a pretty good year. We have total adjusted pupil units of eight hundred and fifty-six. One strategy that we do from year to year is that we actually budget ten, ten students less than our actual projected students, right? So we have projected eight hundred and fifty-six pupil units, but we're actually gonna budget for eight hundred and forty-six. And we do that for any fluctuation of students moving in and out of the district in addition to when the state does an adjustment at the end of the year and they pay us based on the actual number of service hours that the student was at the building, we anticipate that. So that way we don't have any, any loss in. So that way we don't have any, any loss in funding, okay? Any questions on our ADM projection? Again, this is the number-one thing that drives our budget. Okay, we'll move on. Again, just a little gistering on the funding, funding formula. The majority of the funding formula, which accounts for about seventy percent of our revenue, kinda gives you this historic on what it is. As I mentioned, here's the biennium that we are in. We received four percent funding formula increase last year, and then two percent this upcoming fiscal year. Going into fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, that's when they'll tie it into inflation. Okay, we'll keep going down. Okay? This is just some statistics that I like to kinda put together to kinda see where we are at. But overall, out of five hundred and twenty schools, based on the amount of revenue per pupil unit, we set about a hundred and sixty-five, which is pretty darn good. We wanna be as efficient as possible with every dollar that comes into our, into our building. And I like to think that we are very good with that. The state average per pupil unit is about eighteen thousand dollars, where we are at about eighteen thousand seven hundred. Just a little bit about the state average, okay? This is just kinda an idea in terms of expenses, how we spend the majority of our budget. You can see the majority of it goes to instruction, which is what we want. This is just the spread of what we spent the majority of our dollars in. And I'll keep going down. And for anybody that likes charts instead of numbers, this kinda gives you an idea. And then the last thing is really what you are looking at in terms of where we are, where we'll be, and taking an additional step. So I give you guys a kind of a three-year projection. Here is our current budget fiscal year twenty-four. As I mentioned before, we are pretty certain that we're gonna land in the mark that our general fund balance is gonna end right about three point six million dollars. The deficit that we all know about has to do with the approval of the multi-facility use building. We invest that money dollar, dollars back into our school, so that's what we'll be. The budget in orange is really the one that we are approving tonight. Overall, for the general fund, I am projecting that we're gonna receive twelve point five million dollars. And we're gonna spend twelve point three, increasing our fund balance to three point eight million dollars. Okay? And that has taken into account everything that we talked about, from the projection of our students to practically all of our current staff, settlement negotiations, and everything. So, again, it's a year-long process. Total revenue for the district, taking into account all the different funds, right? So we are projecting that we are going to receive about eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in our food service fund. I now have a better grasp on the funding fluctuations in our meal service program. So remember that last year, the state came in and passed the free meal for every student. So we now get, we now have a better understanding of that funding formula. The state and the federal government practically split the bill. So, I now know how to accommodate it and how to project it a little bit better. And you see that from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five, you see the adjustment there. As we now know how every, how the, how the mechanics behind that particular program now. Community Ed is going to receive about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The one thing I do have to highlight in community ed is our Plow Bikes. Plow Bikes is an extremely, extremely profitable program for the school district. It's very well, very well managed, and it is, it is a very good necessity to have for parents in our school district. So I would say kudos to Plow Bikes, they operate very efficiently. We're done with our construction fund. If you look out the window, that's the last piece of it, so we will close this fund at the end of fiscal year twenty-five. Our debt service fund, this is where we collect taxpayer dollars to come in to pay our outstanding debt. Again, the majority of that debt has to do with our twenty-twenty fourteen, or twenty-fourteen building construction fund. So, that's where we collect, and you see that money practically paying down that debt. Our Fund Eight is actually our scholarship fund. Last year, we had a significant influx in donors coming through and really adding quite a bit to our scholarship fund. So that was pretty cool to see. Projecting that we're gonna receive about fourteen thousand dollars in generous donations and from that we allocate payments to students, graduating students, what about that is? Each particular scholarship has a criteria for that, so it's a very complex process. Fund Twenty-two is our student activity accounts. These are fundraising accounts. This is where advisors and students work together to collect money for a particular purpose. Overall, we stay about the hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand mark. Unless we have a school trip coming up, and that's when you see significant amount of revenue being generated in that particular fund, because school, school trips are very expensive. And you see that last year. Overall, total revenue for the district, including all the funds, we are expected to be at about sixteen million. And we are budgeted for about fifteen million dollars, so. Yet, we try to maximize the capacity of each dollar to as best as possible. One thing to notice in terms from an analytic, analytical perspective is that we are sitting in a very good spot in terms of how efficient we're using every dollar. And I say that, that we are staffed properly for the number of dollars that are coming in. That is your fiscal year twenty-five budget. Lot of information, a lot of information to consume and try to process, but I will open this time for any questions. Here, any, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, district enrollment ended this school year with eight hundred and thirty-five, kindergarten through twelve. Started the year with eight hundred and thirty-three with preschool. We're up three students from nine fifty-one to nine fifty-four from the beginning of the year, which is good. Marketing update, just a few things. I put in a report the number of items that we did to market our school, our programming, what we offer here at ISD five four eight. Right now, we are currently printing our brochure to send out, hopefully by the end of June, if everything works out. So that will market our school from preschool through twelfth grade. Also this summer, we have a few parades, Pelican Fest and then the Airheart Parades. We're working on getting some groups to represent ISD five four eight in the parades here this summer. Also this summer, we're looking at them and currently are contacting students that are eligible for preschool and in kindergarten if they haven't signed up yet. We're working on contacting their families to get them enrolled in our school district. Long-range plan update, currently researching groups, businesses who offer support of a needs assessment and talking with superintendents who experience a needs assessment to get feedback and ideas, the process and who they recommend to help us with a needs assessment. Getting great feedback from them. Drop-off lane update, construction has started on our drop-off lane. Publician entered door eight to get to the district office, and we have signs posted in the hallways to help guide them through the building. Two school board items. One is the hire of Julie Jones, full-time evening custodian. Right now, with that hire, we would be fully staffed district-wide in our custodial staff. We've been short here for the last few months. Also approved the hire of the following summer staff. Completed our staff there with the summer, from summer school to cub bikes to custodial to summer rec. So I believe that we are fully staffed in all those areas now for the summer. School board meeting scheduled for approval tonight under business items. We've been going Wednesday nights, which has worked really well in the past. There's one, if you look at the Wednesday nights of the schedule for that one, we did change January to Monday just because there's a conflict there with one board member that they shared. And then the Mondays in March and April because of Lent. And then May, we changed it to Monday because of scholarship night on that Wednesday night. Okay, so those why, the reasons why we changed those Wednesdays to Mondays. The other ones are Mondays, the Monday schedule were mostly Mondays. Now there's gonna be some activities throughout the year. And by the way, just remember, with activities, they are rescheduled. So now some activities are not scheduled now, might be scheduled later on if we would go to the Monday evenings for school board meetings. In the summertime with that Monday schedule, we did move it to Wednesday just because if there's any school board members out on the weekend and they're coming into Monday or coming back on Monday, we just put it in the middle of the week. We thought that would work best for our recommendations. So, again, in the past, it's worked best for board members to meet on Wednesday nights at six P M. Because of conflicts with activities and, and with their own children involved in activities. Next item for approval under business items is the dates for filing for our school board. Those are the filing dates from July twentieth to August thirteenth, so that's for approval, the resolution. And then the last item that we wanna talk about here, the administration relates to talk about, is the twenty-four, twenty-five district goals. And what I'd like to do here is, I would like just to share a little information, share what our recommendation is to the board for our district goals and our priorities. Just a couple reminders, when we look at our district goals, we look to align World's Best Workforce, which has now changed. It is not called the World's Best Workforce now, it's renamed to Comprehensive Achievement and Civic readiness. Is what it's called now. So we try to align our World's Best Workforce, Achievement and Integration, and have our goals aligned. So we take those with the expectations that they have under the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration, and we looked at our goals. So, our recommendation for priorities up on top, you can see is community engagement, educate the whole child, increase student enrollment, and sound and transparent financial practices, okay? Our district goals, our recommendation we have for Mr. Nelson will talk about the first two, and Mrs. Densky will talk about goals three and four.
Yeah, so the first one is that seventy-five percent of the students are ready for kindergarten. You know, not all of our students that come to kindergarten go through our preschool programs. You know, and with us having our preschool and Head Start, Head Starts in our building, not under our umbrella, but yet they fall out of the same criteria. They do have a few set rules that the Head Start program has that they have to follow. But our goal is to have seventy-five percent of those students ready by the time they enter kindergarten. And the second one is that, you know, our free and reduced students, we increased by three percent. And none of our teachers know who's free and reduced. So that goal is to get all students, you know, improving by at least three percent. And that's a goal that we shoot for every year, so, just so everyone knows that, you know, no one other than the people that work with the forums know who's free and reduced. So none of those students are targeted, but it's just that we're trying to get all those students increased. I think with some of the stuff we're doing, it's a very realistic goal with the new math curriculum. We saw some good gains with the number quarter this year. It's exciting with the new curriculum, and then with all the reading training going in. You know, really, they talk too about, you really will see jumps in like year three and on is when you really see growth, that it kinda takes a while when you get new curriculums, you know, adopted, so. That's our goal.
I think both, just to add for number two, I think both billions of for great interventions to help our students make that jump, increase.
Goals three and four, I think, really tie together. Four is, we're gonna exceed the statewide graduation rate, but part of graduating is having a plan once you graduate. We worked on this one really hard this past year, and we'll continue to work on it with our students. But a plan to attend post-secondary education, military, or enter the workforce. At the high school, we do quite a bit of events that allow kids to explore post-secondary education, whether it's four-year, two-year trade school, or we've had some great opportunities to just do internships or earn those certifications in school. Join the military, we worked with military this past year to introduce our juniors and seniors to military activities or enter the workforce. So those are the recommendations for people.
We change post-secondary, college, it used to be college, we changed it to post-secondary education just because there's different programs after high school. So that's what we changed. Okay? Questions? Okay, thank you. I think we covered everything, yes.
Okay.
Here's where the board chair gets to read. So, on the consent items, we approve the board meeting events, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, regular school board meeting. B, financial claims, May bills. C, treasuries report. D, accept donations. So we have student accounts, eighty dollars for our clinic. Viking boutique, eighty dollars for our clinic. Alseglu Scholarship, five hundred dollars basically. Viking boutique, eighty-six dollars and twelve cents from Provolence Lutheran Church. PRHS Pearl's Golf, sixty dollars, Minnesota National Bank. Item A, personnel, approve the resignation of Carla Breen as Minnesota Honor Society advisor at the high school. Approve the resignation of Steve Babb as assistant, excuse me, baseball coach at the high school. Approve the resignation of Aubrey Pinga as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Approve the resignation of Cassie Fawcett as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Approve the retirement of Cindy Lyden as kitchen cook at the elementary. Approve the resignation of Cameron McMartin, McMartin as special education paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. Approve the resignation of Normal Martin as part-time access interventionist at the elementary. Approve the resignation of Mary Storston as part-time access interventionist at the elementary. Approve the resignation of Tasha Vogel as special education paraprofessional at the high school. Approve the hire of Julie Jones as full-time evening custodian at the high school. Approve the hire of Kelsey Lage as Minnesota Honor Society advisor at the high school. Approve the hire of Devon Severson as prom advisor at the high school. Approve the hire of Amber Wang as choir teacher and ball play advisor at the elementary. Approve the hire of the following summer staff. So we have Tasha Vogel for summer school paraprofessional. Plow Bikes, Faith Banton, Brenna Davis, Angel Garza, Maddox Vandra. Custodial Todd Hughesby, Connor Larson, Connor, excuse me, Carson Weers, Connor Waifel, and summer rec, Michael Hanru. And item F, approve the twenty-four, twenty-five Head Start East. So I entertain a motion for consent items. I'll move to approve the consent items.
I'll second.
Second, my Brenna. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed saying. Consent items carried. On the business items, approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school board meeting schedule. So we had two choices on that document that.
So we had, uh, two choices on that document that was sent. Do you really wanna make a motion for either or, or we've discussed first or?
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting schedule of the Monday, the third Monday of the month. With Wednesday mornings in the summer.
Third Monday of March. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Greg. Any discussion on that? How does that, does that work for everybody? Molly, how's it work for you?
It's wonderful.
Greg? Okay?
Future.
Yeah. Brenda, words?
Just have to be okay with some people that are involved with reports might not be able to make Monday meetings just because of activities they're involved in and supervision. That's the conflict with Mondays with you're gonna have with supervision to administer them. That's, you just have to understand that.
Yeah, good. Okay. Yeah, we saw some future conflict, we, we should do a pretty responsive, uh, adjustment. Great, any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, Brenda's motion signify by saying aye. By aye, those opposed saying. Motion carries. So we have to approve a resolution establishing dates of filing affidavits candidacy. And those filing dates are July twentieth, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So I'll entertain a motion and a second, and then it's a resolution that I'll read, and then we'll move on to resolution.
I'll move to approve the resolution establishing dates of filing affidavits candidacy.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits candidacy. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district five forty-eight, state of Minnesota, as follows. Period of filing affidavits candidacy for the office of school board member of independent school district five four eight shall begin on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, and shall close on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. An affidavit candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk and the two-dollar filing fee paid prior to the five o'clock P M on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the official newspaper of the district at least two weeks prior to the first date of affidavits candidacy. First date to file affidavits candidacy. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least ten days prior to the first date of the file affidavits candidacy. Notice of said filing dates shall be in substantially the following. There's some wording under here, so similar word. So this is a resolution, Brenda, how do you resolve?
Yes.
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 Molly? Resolution carries. Item C, approve the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year long-term facilities maintenance plan. I will move to, uh, approve the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year long-term facilities maintenance plan as presented.
Second.
Is there some chance? So I made a motion, Greg made a second. Have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of approving the, approving my motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed saying. Motion carries. Item D, approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year proposed budget. Do we have a motion for that?
I move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year proposed budget.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second? Second by Molly. Any discussion on the proposed budget? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of Greg's motion signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed saying. Budget carries. And up to item E, approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five district goals and priorities.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five district goals and priorities.
Okay, I made a motion by Brenda, do we have a second? Second by Greg. Any discussion on the district goals and priorities? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of approving the district goals and priorities, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed saying. Motion carries. So we will move on to upcoming meetings. We have a July meeting that is going to be? July seventeenth. At seven A M. So July meeting will be July seventeenth at seven A M. August meeting will be twenty-first, August twenty-first. At seven A M. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Greg. Second by Brenda, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed saying. We're adjourned.